All directors back to the deans, please. Okay, back in session. As we've now reached 5:30 PM, we will next go to public testimony. The rules for public testimony are on the screen, and I would ask that speakers are respectful of those rules. I would note that the Board does not take public comments on items related to personnel or individually-named staff. The majority of the speaker's time must be spent on the topic they've indicated they wish to speak about. If you're not speaking to your topic, I will politely ask you to speak to your topic. I'd also like to note that each speaker has a two-minute speaking time. When the two minutes have ended, please conclude your remarks. If you don't conclude your remarks, I will also ask you to terminate your remarks. And thank you so much. Ms. Scheck, will you read off the roll call, or the testimony speakers, please?
First up for public testimony, we have Alexandria Rodriguez, followed by Chris Jackins, and then Alex Zimmerman.
Hi. How are you guys? Okay, I have a piece of paper so that I won't go over time. Okay, so first off, I want to introduce myself. My name is Alexandria Rodriguez. I was a student. I am a student at Inter-Agency's Academy. I want to speak to you for young people who don't have homes, parents, and have no support, and are fighting to keep into school, and graduate, and make a difference in their lives. That's really whose behalf I'm here to speak on. Those are the students that matter to me, the ones that don't have the stability, don't have the support at home, and come to school and get that support from the teachers and the people around them. I am and I was one of those kids, as I said. Donald Felder, I don't know if you guys know who Donald Felder is. If you don't, that's a shame. He found me October of my sophomore year, and brought me to Inter-Agency and said that this was going to be my new home, and it was. And from there, teachers took me under their wing, and like never before, they really got to know me. They got to know my dislikes, my likes. They got to know how angry I was, too. When I first got there, I was transitioning out of foster care, so I had a lot of anger. I didn't want to accept the help that was given to me. I didn't see, I didn't see, you know, that people were just trying to help me. I didn't see better for myself. It felt insurmountable. I struggled with addiction, my home life, math, and those were the things that I also ran away from and fought hard not to face. With the help of the staff, more like family members at Inter-Agency, I saw it through, and it became mind over matter. I started at Southeast. I learned about my addiction at the Recovery High School, and I made great progress at Alder Academy. I found help with school, work, and found a new me. As I move forward, and as you guys move forward with the business of this school board meeting, keep us in mind, us, the ones who aren't always eager to speak, us, the ones who fight to get up and go to school in the morning, us, the ones who have very little support, and protect the funding that supports the kids like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Jackins, Box 84063, Seattle 98124. On Magnolia Elementary boundary changes, two points. Number one, as proposed, this district project was not able to comply with the language in state law about not creating or aggravating racial imbalance. Number two, the Board is being asked to give rubber stamp approval to racial imbalance. Please vote "no." On the proposal to add $1.5 million to the Ingram Project, the district report seems to imply that if the Board votes "no," the district could save $1.4 million by implementing the same work over a longer period of time. Please vote "no." On the annual financial report for fiscal year 2017, 2018, five points. Number one, the amount listed on Page 4 for actual total expenditures does not seem to match the amount listed on Page 7. There is a difference of some $3,000. I appreciate Ms. Bergy addressing that earlier. Number two, on Page 13, the report references the debt for the district headquarters. Number three, Rick Anderson, a longtime Seattle journalist, wrote multiple articles on the headquarters' debt. One article from 2011 noted that the headquarters was, quote, "being built in the wrong place, at the wrong time, for the wrong reasons," unquote. Number four, according to a December 29 newspaper article, Rick Anderson recently passed away. Number five, so, thank you, Rick Anderson, for your good work. Thank you.
Next up, we have Alex Zimmerman, followed by Melissa Westbrook, and then Brian Terry.
Thank you. Hi. Happy New Year. My name, Alex Zimmerman, and I'm first time here, so a little bit 10-20 second about who I am. I spent in school 20 years, teach student in university, but I'm very stupid. You're talking about stupidity to her? It's exactly what is I want to speak to. I'm very stupid, because I come and talk about something, but is I know more and better than you probably 100 times. So, situation right now very simple. I go for agenda number one, so we need to open a new territory, for my understanding. How we can open a new territory with old rules? So I want little bit delivery my opinion about rules, what is I see for 30-plus year, what is I live in Seattle, in country, and about school, and children, and everything what is I see around. Two minutes probably not enough, but don't worry it. I come and speak for last 10 year, more than 2,000 time, from Tacoma to Everett, in Seattle Council, and everywhere, thousand and thousand time. So, guys, we need change rules. What is mean change rule? We need mean our rules what has come before in America for 250 year ago. This you who make correction with everything, include this, whereas you find this, are you a corporation or government? What is last time remember I told you about this limitation of freedom of speech? Everybody have right speak. And what is you doing? This is a pure fascism, because you change American principle what is exist for 250 year. In this Seattle, I call Seattle a number-one fascist city in America, because I have and my family have experience with fascism much closer. We go right now, every day, more and more and more. Two minutes not enough, but don't worry it. When I staying in life, I will come back. And told you guys, you doing something very dangerous and very bad. You bring fascism to life, every day, more, more, more. So I speak right now to everybody who listen to me. Stop fascism. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, or good afternoon, good evening. I wanted to talk about the bar for roofing repairs to be made in 2019. It only has two buildings, and yet Whitman Middle School reports that they have to use buckets to catch water from their leaky roof. There's money in BTA 4, and heck, there's still money in BTA 3. What is the capital emergency in Seattle schools if not a leaky roof? And Whitman is getting no new building, so the least that can be done is to fix the roof. Next, I again ask you to spend the use of King County's Check Yourself Survey. It is an untested tool. In its current form, not a single child has ever taken it. It asks intimate questions about students. Are they in therapy? Does someone drink at home? Do they go to religious services? What is odd about the screening tool is that it seems to be a lot more about what is happening at home than how the student is feeling. Again, I say to you that parents were not notified. King County may not care. They indicated as such to me in their emails, but you should. No PTA was asked about it, as to tell their members, and of course, World School has no PTA. I'm supposing World School was chosen because their parents are immigrants who would have no idea this is happening. Not notifying parents goes against Board policy on surveys. I still believe it violates the federal education law PPR, but most of all, it is unethical to do this to students and parents without parental notification. Here's a question. How come it's okay to ask middle school students questions about what goes on in their homes without telling their parents about it, but the district won't tell parents what they're doing to children in their own schools? Why is it okay for you and it's not okay for the parents? You need to tell the parents. Every PTA president I contacted said I know nothing about this. That's four out of five schools. Is that fair? Is that ethical? It is not. The Check Yourself Survey of middle school students in five middle schools and world schools needs to be suspended immediately. Thank you.
After Brian Terry, we will have Craig Seasholes, followed by Juanita Galloway.
Good evening. In our schools today, a white student is 20 times more likely than a black student to be identified as highly capable. This leads to segregated classrooms that send a clear message. White students are more capable and more deserving. This is institutional racism. District Policy 0030 and the WAC specifically prohibit this inequity. To bring our program into compliance, there are two basic rules it must follow. First, serve students from all backgrounds equitably and without de facto segregation. And second, never place a self-contained, highly-capable classroom in a neighborhood school with different demographics. Our Advanced Learning Task Force is, right now, considering changes to the highly-capable service model. Please make it clear to them that any new service model must conform to these two basic rules. Eliminating institutional racism from our program will send a new message to our students. All of you are capable and deserving. Thank you.
Craig?
Good evening. Yes, I am a Seattleite, born, partially educated in Seattle Public Schools. My name is Juanita Galloway, I'm sorry. Daughter of a Seattle Public School teacher, Virginia Galloway, who was one of the first black teachers in Seattle. My mother, so I grew up with education. I have four adult now sons who went through Seattle Public Schools. All four of them have advanced degrees now, I'm proud to say. My concern now is my grandchildren. I have one grandchild in Seattle Public Schools, at Genesee Elementary School, which happens to be one of the schools where my mother was a principal, about 40 years ago. But I also have three grandchildren in the Kent School District, and I will have two in the Renton School District, and I know that the kind of, it's a common, kind of a domino effect. What Seattle does, you know, the other districts, smaller districts around, will be looking at. I think ethnic studies in the schools are vital. The last school where I taught was Van Assold Elementary, which has one of the most diverse populations in the district. We all know that the majority of teachers are not minority in the district, and it's not likely to change for a while. So I think it's very important to encourage, I know we can't require, but to push, to encourage, the present teachers to research other cultures, the history, their current events, the issues in their, in their communities so that they can be more understanding. Last weekend, I went to a meeting of SEE, which is the Social Equity Educators.
I'm sorry, could I ask you to please conclude your remarks within the next 5 to 10 seconds? We have a two-minute window.
Sorry. Anyway, yeah, I would, I'm curious if there has been a survey regarding which teachers or who is capable of teaching ethnic studies in the district. How are they going to recruit the teachers? What are their requirements going to be? I guess I'm almost done.
Thank you so much.
This concludes the sign-up list for public testimony this evening. Thank you.
Okay, so we're a little ahead of normal schedule, and Director Harris has been following along on TV, and she's calling back in now. So I'm going to open it back up if any directors would like to add additional comments with regards to testimony or anything else. Director DeWolff?
Yes, thank you. Just first want to say thank you again to Alexandria Rodriguez for coming and speaking. Always super grateful to have students here speaking, not only for themselves, but even more so for the students and their peers. So really grateful to her for coming to share with us today. And also just wanted to, I guess, reply back about particularly focused on ethnic studies. Really great suggestion, and thanks for that question. I know we're all very excited for ethnic studies be, as becoming part of our curriculum, and so again, there was an event on, there's an event this Saturday at 3:00 PM at El Centro de la Raza to learn more, and we hope to have some really great news coming up the next few months about ethnic studies here within Seattle Public Schools.
Would anyone else like to add to their comments? Director Geary?
I would just ditto exactly Director DeWolff's comments, and I'll leave it at that, because those were pretty much mine as well. I do want to thank Anita for coming and testifying. I ran into her out in the hallway and told her we had a short list and that we would be excited to hear her point of view. So thank you so much for, for taking that moment and talking to us. And then the only other thing is I'm going to continue my almost every Tuesday morning meetings at Zoka on Blakely, behind the University Village, from 8:00 to 9:30. You're welcome to drop in, chat. I usually have a group of regulars, but usually there's one person who shows up to bring an issue that we all can reflect upon, and I really appreciate that. There are times when I can't make the Tuesday morning meeting, but I always post it. You'll know the morning of if you look on my Facebook page. The school board one is the most reliable, but I try and copy it over to my personal one, too, depending on which one you've managed to, to follow or ping. So I will continue those, and I hope to hear from people. Thank you.
Director Mack?
Yeah, I appreciate everyone who came out. Ditto, comments made. I don't want to take too much time, but I do want to respond in particular to the comment around, the planning around our facilities and ensuring that every building that has needs gets addressed, and especially around Whitman, and knowing that there are some challenges in that building now, and it was not selected for the BEX 5. But, but what was put into that package, which if voters approve it in February, there are many buildings across the district are getting critical maintenance needs met, as well as the, I believe, eight that are getting replacement and modernization. And I have a question in around where Whitman's critical needs may be in that plan, and we're working on the, the committee work plan around presenting around the implementation plan for BEX 5, potentially having a work session in February, hopefully. So that whole process should illuminate, and hopefully the critical needs will get planned out, and we'll pass our levy.
Thank you. Director Pinkham, did you have somewhere you'd like to add?
Yes, just want to again thank everyone for coming out and sharing their public testimony, especially to our student Alexandria Rodriguez, coming up and sharing her voice and concerns that we don't overlook the children that always have the most needs, those that are homeless, parentless, and struggling with lot more outside of school than in school. So thank you, Alexandria, and remind us that we need to take care of those who sometimes have the most needs. Juanita, thank you for sharing your views on ethnic studies, and once we do implement this, that we make sure that we have a ways, make sure those teachers that are in front of the class have been trained and acknowledge how to approach this. We had some struggles with this since time memorial, and thankfully, we had some people coming in and provide training for our teachers, and plus the administrators at the school levels to help implement that, and hopefully we can duplicate that for our ethnic studies program. Melissa Restbrook, thank you for bringing up the concerns that you have. I, too, I guess, would like to see more information about this Check Yourself Survey. What information are we getting out to our parents? And do we need to check ourselves? Are we following a good protocol if we're asking minors to complete a survey without the parents knowing? Maybe they are getting informed some way, but if we're getting some feedback, that doesn't seem like the message is getting out. Let's see what we can do about making sure all of our parents are informed, especially those are English isn't their first language. I do not yet have a next committee meeting scheduled. I had to wait until athletic calendars came out. My daughter's playing basketball for Hazel Wolf K8, and I did come out. Now it's just balancing all the schedules and seeing if I can have the next committee meeting. So just check the Board website for my next meeting. Thank you.
Director Harris, would you like to add in?
I would indeed. Thank you so much. Thank you especially to Ms. Rodriguez, and mostly thank you for calling out Donald Felder. He is one in a million, as is the entire staff and Principal Karen Andrews at Inter-Agency. What they do over there is nothing short of a miracle every day. And a real note as well, Dr. Felder is also on the Seattle, City of Seattle Families Education Preschool Promise Oversight Board. And we're very lucky to have his background and his continuing service with the African-American Standing Committee as well. I am very concerned about the Check Yourself Survey. I understand that Legal has taken a look at it and said that it works. It may follow the letter of the law according to Legal, but I have extreme difficulties with it, and I hope that we can revisit this as a Board and as staff, and with our partners at King County. You know, they say the road to heck is paved with good intention, and I think this is a well-intended survey. But if we are not including our parents in the conversation, then something's wrong here, and we need to step up our accountability and transparency. And thank you to Ms. Galloway. We are making great progress on ethnic studies. One of the things, though, that, that you have rightly pointed out, and that our partners at Social Equity Educators have pointed out as well, is professional development are going to be the keys to a really robust implementation of ethnic studies. And frankly, we have to find the money to do that. But all, thank you for coming down and telling us, and Ms. Rodriguez, please bring your friends next time. We need to hear from more of you and more often. Thank you.
I'll, I'll put a cap on that. My colleagues have stated it nicely. I ditto all of that. I, I share the concern about the Whitman Building. That was during all of our conversations around the BEX 5 prioritization. I was really worried that that particular facility was in, in really high needs. So as you're thinking about the different priorities for implementation for roofs, whether it's a short-term fix that will actually work, or whether it, you know, what that structure looks like, I'd really appreciate hearing more about that. Similarly, with the Check Yourself Survey, as, as I understand, our policy, it does indicate that if we're doing research, with our research policies, it does include a notification clause. And so hearing that we are not sufficiently notifying families is a warning flag for me that says we need to take a much closer look at that, how we're rolling it out, and how we're communicating about it. And then similarly, Ms. Galloway, thank you for bringing your voice. And the, the ethnic studies process has been a really exciting one. I think it's, it's a change from within and a change from without. So it's, you know, it's external, internal, sort of at the same time, and it's a new area for us. Instead of just buying a textbook and training people how to use a textbook, it's shifting a culture, shifting a mindset, and getting an entire organization to shift along with it. And I think that there's nothing that you can, there's no way to learn better than teaching. So as our educators are delivering it, we have to be really clear that they're teaching it properly, and that way they'll learn it properly. And so there's, the dynamic between professional development and implementation is going to be really challenging on that and really important. So I, I hope that you'll also stay in touch as you hear both the good and the bad, and help us with course corrections. I think that takes us back to the item that was removed from the consent agenda, and this was item number three, I believe. I am looking for a motion for that. Do you want to read the title?
I can, too.
The title, number three, BEX 5, BEX 4 Approval of Budget Transfer From BEX 4 Program Contingency to the Ingram High School Classroom Addition Project Budget and Approval of Construction Change Order 2 for the project. No, that should be the BTA 3.
Right on the consent agenda.
I'm in consent, I'm in, there we go. I thought that was in a different place. BTA 3, I'm one, one levy up. Award Architectural and Engineering Contract K1322 to SM Stemper Architects for the 2019 Roof Repair and Replacement Project came before Ops on December 6th for...
I move that the school board authorize a superintendent to execute contract K1322 with SM Stemper Architects in the amount of $659,760 for architectural and engineering services for the 2019 roof and roof repair and replacement projects, plus $1,000 for reimbursable expenses, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement, implement the contract.
I second the motion.
Would staff or directors like to ask any questions or make comments on this? Looking to Richard Best. And Director Pinkham?
Yeah, I was the one that asked to get decided removed. One, because of the updates since introduction, if you can help explain those, and then also if you heard the comments from one of our public commentators.
The updates from introduction, Director Pinkham, as you might remember, is Director Geary requested that we articulate some of the past history of improvements at our schools. And so we've added information of work done both at North Queen Anne Elementary School, and then the African-American Academy as well. I am aware of the roof leak problems that we are experiencing at Whitman Middle School. I have been engaged in conversations with Frank Griffin. This, at this moment in time, would be a Facilities Department issue, but our Facilities Department works very closely. Bruce Gower, who's the Director of Facilities, Frank Griffin is Major Preventative Maintenance Manager, and Chris Richardson and I, so that we can look at these types of issues and then figure out the best way to address them, cognizant of future plans for schools. So we want to be utilized to fiscal resources prudently for our citizens, so.
One question on that. Is the Whitman roof officially based on date and condition? Is it officially end of life?
It, it is near the end of life. There are strategies that we can employ, coatings, for example, that will extend roof lives five to 10 years. I need to go out and further examine that to make recommendations to our Facilities Department. We have major preventative maintenance dollars as part of our BEX 5 capital levy. Those have also been included in BTA 4 and BEX 4 moving backwards. And so Frank Griffin and I have been exchanging emails to go and look at the Whitman Middle School roof.
Thank you. Director Mack?
I think for a point of clarification from me, each year, we approve a capital budget, which is based on the projects that are planned for the year, and so forth. And so we're going through that process now, and in March, I think we're getting the full presentation. I think we're getting the full presentation of what all those projects are, what the budget is, and what we're expecting to do. In this situation where Whitman might be showing some kind of critical needs sooner than maybe was planned, or that kind of thing, is that, is that something that potentially may show up in the budget that's presented in March for next year? Or is it something that, that may be considered and discussed to be addressed prior to that in the current budget?
Yeah, the current repairs to prevent the leaks will be addressed with Facilities Department dollars at this moment in time. That comes from the general fund. That's an annual operating expense. Then, the question is, does this roof need to be, are there strategies that we can employ to extend this, the roof life 10 years so that the occupants aren't experiencing roof leaks during that period? And, you know, we can focus on the educational mission of that middle school. And that Frank Griffin and I need to go and look at and determine, you know, what's the existing roof? What are the coatings that we could potentially use to extend that life? Director Mack?
So, in short, the immediate leaks are going to be handled ASAP by facilities? And then the longer-term solutions of the critical needs of the building are going to be worked out and discussed, and we'll be having further conversation around those plans?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Director Pinkham?
And then also just, I think what really caught me when I was looking at this was the last red line item on there. The contract award to implement construction activities will be funded with successful passage of Bex 5. So, this is, again, just to start the design process. The funding that's going to be used. But then in, in it, it says that the completion of the project, which I assume would be the construction as well, will be done by summer 2019. Does that allow us enough room to, once we get the design, to identify the construction people and get things started to complete by summer 2019? Based upon if Bex 5 passes?
Great question, Director Pinkham. We have entered into an interim contract to get the design team started on these solutions for these roofs. These roofs are both catastrophic nature and failure. We need to be replacing these roofs during the summer of 2019. We will be bidding these projects, March, April timeframe for work to occur, summer timeframe. It may extend into fall at the African-American Academy, also Van Asselt, but we will be able to complete the work during the summer months at North Queen Anne. But both of these need to be addressed. They have significant moisture intrusion problems.
Okay. Thank you for the questions and comments. Ms. Check, the roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, so, we're, we're at a time where I think folks could use a break. We'll take a 10-minute recess and reconvene at 6:15 for the rest of our agenda.